Colleagues, we're going to go until 2 o'clock with this update by homelessness officer on the summit. And then at 2 o'clock, manager will go to the public safety. And again, we have a hard stop at 5 o'clock so that commissions and others can have access to the system. So manager, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and appreciate the opportunity to provide an update from our homeless strategy officer this afternoon, specifically focusing on a recent plenary that was done last week under the guise of a summit to address unsheltered homelessness. And this was unveiled to the public, and we wanted to make sure that council had an opportunity to also see the recommendations that came from that. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to our homeless strategy officer, Diana Gray.
Thank you, sir. So this will be a high level overview of the outcomes and recommendations that came out of the summit to address unsheltered homelessness that drew to a close last Thursday after several weeks of intensive work from folks from all sectors of the community, both government, private sector providers and advocates. And so before I jump into that, I do want to just preview for you that we do anticipate at next council meeting, bringing in RCA to counsel for some of the contracts related to the HEAL initiative, which we know we are all anxious to get rolling. And so those will include contracts for the rapid rehousing services, but also for the dedicated shelter beds. And what that will entail is an operating contract for the transition of the roadway in, which is currently serving as pro-lodge number five, into our bridge shelter. And those beds, of course, will be available to individuals coming out of encampments on their way to permanent housing. So again, just in terms of giving a high level overview of the summit, the pieces that I wanted to cover today include the overarching goals of this, of the summit or the recommended goals that came out of the summit. Generally, the approach that we anticipate taking the timeline and the and the sort of global budget and what we think the funding gap is at present that we need to focus on filling. So anticipate certainly going into more detail in one-on-one meetings with you as you desire and/or at future groupings. So then I think if we can transition to slide two of the presentation. Excellent. So I think the banner goal here is that we want to house 3,000 people over the next three years, and that's 3,000 people over and above our current rate of rehousing, which is something at something typically like about 1,800 a year. Of those 3,000 individuals, we want a thousand of those folks to be placed into PSH, which of course is set aside for people experiencing chronic homelessness who have therefore been homeless for a long time or frequently over the years, who are living with a disability and are likely to need ongoing services and supports over time. In terms of the approach, I'd actually point you to number three first, which is that we contemplate taking an approach that goes directly into the encampments, targeting individual encampments, offering folks in those encampments housing, and also offering shelter to those that need it while they look for housing or case managers help them get their documents together, et cetera. This will sound very familiar to you insofar as that it mirrors some of the work that council has already directed us to do. And then the third piece, which is number two on this slide, I think really acknowledges that in order to do this, we're going to have to pay a lot of attention to our system's capacity because we're really coming to scale here. And so thinking about capacity and also thinking about this work through an equity lens will mean that we need to certainly help our providers staff up for this effort, but that very importantly, we also bring new providers into the work that we're doing and particularly focus on connecting with and building capacity in service providers who are really rooted in communities of color. Next slide, please. So in terms of the approach around rehousing folks who are in encampments, I think that there are four primary steps here. First, we are of course targeting those encampments, working with the community and prioritizing encampments, both by need and by safety and health considerations. And so those are pieces we'll need to work out. Doing a lot of outreach upfront in those encampments to build relationships and trust and understand the needs, and then offering rehousing. So we anticipate that rehousing efforts in a particular encampment will take somewhere around two to four weeks, with the bulk of that time being dedicated to the outreach piece and enrolling folks in programs. But then, you know, perhaps a week or so in the actual rehousing efforts. We want to really beef up the teams that are going into the encampments to include the outreach work that, you know, we've already got folks doing really well in the community, making sure, of course, that we continue to have behavioral health resources attached to that outreach team, but also that we offer storage to those who need it while they wait for housing, that we're cognizant of the transportation needs that will be there as people transition into housing, and that we really also bring in peers who are really critical in terms of understanding the experience of people who are moving into housing. One of the recommendations that our facilitators made based on their communities was that in this beginning phase, it might be better to not have law enforcement as part of those outreach teams. So it's not supposing that there is never a role for law enforcement, but really saying as you go in and build trust, it may be better to have teams that are made largely of service providers and peers. And then the final step, of course, is moving people into housing. Other communities in some cases have been able to move folks directly from the street into housing, and that is something we will be driving toward. But we also know that in some cases, we will need a bit of time to locate units and to get folks' applications, et cetera, in order. And so again, similar to the work that you've already directed us to do, we contemplate having enough shelter available so that people have a safe place to be and to work with their caseworkers while they locate housing and move in. Next slide, please. So in terms of timeline, we spoke to 3,000 additional people over the next three years. We know that we are going to need to ramp up our ability to rehouse people very quickly. And so we've set some interim goals that acknowledge that we would be accelerating the pace over time. So over the next several months, we're looking at roughly 50 people a month or so with the goal that through the three years, as the effort matures, we would be rehousing folks at the rate of about 100 people a month. Next slide. So in terms of the overall resourcing of the effort, we look at a total cost of just north of $500 million, and that is split between $275 million in capital because we do anticipate developing some of the units, although certainly not all through this effort, and about $240 million in services and rents. We do already have dollars committed or anticipated coming out of the gate. And so the difference there, of course, I mean, committed, I think, is pretty clear. Either city council or in some, in this case, Housing Authority of the City of Austin has committed funds to an effort. And in other cases, when we think about anticipated funds, we're thinking about public revenue streams that have been available year over year historically, excuse me, and that we would anticipate being able to leverage. So our estimate of committed and anticipated funds is just over $220 million for an amount that we need to secure of about $293 million. And I do want to underscore here that part of the whole purpose of the summit was really to bring all parties to the table with a real acknowledgement of the need. We are going to have to bring the private and philanthropic partners into the fold, over and above what they are currently doing to make this happen. So as we move forward, we can certainly get more granular about what the funding needs are and where they might come from. The other piece I want to mention is that as we are looking at the financing structure of this effort, we will be sensitive to sustainability. So, you know, we are looking at pretty dramatically ramping up, for example, our rapid rehousing capacity. We hope to be able to sustain that going into the future, but we also know that with the backlog of folks we have, and essentially the pent-up demand of people who today have been waiting for housing for a long time, that really having even one-time funds that we increase over a limited period of time would really help us clear that waiting list of people who have been on the streets for a long time awaiting housing resources. So I will close then and take any questions you have in the time that remains. I know you folks have a 2:00 PM hard stop for your next item.
Thank you, Diana. And again, this was just to provide a high level overview. We'll provide more of the detail and backup, and Diana has offered to do one-on-one conversations with each council member. And as you mentioned, we are also posted for the next work session on May 4th to go more specifically into the HEAL initiative as well. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Colleagues, we have 13 minutes, so we'll give everybody a minute or two if you want to comment. Councilmember Kitchen.
Thank you for giving us this overview. Just quickly, I want to say that I am hopeful about this opportunity. I think we, this offers a path and an opportunity to make some real and lasting change, systemic change to get us towards our goal of ending homelessness. And so I think the opportunity is there, and I am to, and interested in committing significant dollars from the city to proceed with this. I know that there's a lot of details that all of us have to understand and work out. But I think as an approach, it is exciting and doable and something that could make some lasting change. I want to say also that I see this as aligned with the HEAL approach that we've already begun. I mean, both HEAL and this community summit have that shared goal of safe and secure housing and an end to homelessness in our community. You know, as we know, HEAL is designed for people to be safe and secure in permanent housing so that each person's engaged in working towards, working towards that resolution that really works best for them and meets their needs and desires. And so what we end up at the end of the day is a permanent person-centered solution with the best chance of success for individuals and for our community. So, you know, HEAL, like this program, connects people to housing, social services, healthcare, and I want to emphasize jobs also and other services. And as you all know, we'll talk more about HEAL, we did last time and we will next time, we're beginning with four locations that are particularly risky and dangerous. And then after people with HEAL, after people are connected to housing and services, after I might emphasize, then these unsafe locations are no longer available for camping. So just finally, in sum, I think that this is a community problem. We need to all come together to, it's a, as a community, we care about people who are living unsheltered on the streets, and we want to have a solution that is lasting and provides change. And so I think, like, as I said, I'm hopeful and excited that this offers that opportunity. I want to thank you, Mayor, for your work on this, as well as all of my colleagues, including Councilmember Tovo, for all the work they've done on HEAL and on all of our other efforts related to homelessness. And I'll just end there and say that I am prepared to do whatever I can to help make this a reality.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Fuentes.
Thank you. Just to build off of Councilmember Kitchen's comments, I am right there with you. This is what our community has been asking for the last few years is what is the plan? Where do we go from here? And here we have it. We have a plan, a strategy, a viable strategy, a way to move our community forward and to set out to provide and unlock those 3,000 homes for our unhoused neighbors. And so I'm excited about this opportunity. I'm proud to be part of a council that outlined homelessness as a strategic priority for us, you know, through the Resilient Resolution that we passed just a few weeks ago. And I just want to voice my support for us to make a sizable investment in this strategy, in this plan, and call upon our community, our business community, our faith leaders, our nonprofits to join us in this effort to double down in your commitment. And I also hope to call upon our Travis County colleagues to join us in this effort because City of Austin cannot do it alone. It's going to take all of us. And what a wonderful time that we're in to be able to tackle this together. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Thiria.
Yes, this is, this is great. You know, this is an opportunity to get us to where we can manage the homeless population. You know, as we know, that there's always going to be a homeless group in this. And as long as we can get down to where we can manage that, it would be a great thing for Austin. And I do really believe what my colleagues have been saying that if we house these people, they will go out there and look for a job, and they will become independent, and we can then move on and help others with resources that we have. This is, to me, it's a lifetime opportunity that we're getting a lot of that resources from the federal government. So this is just really great, and I want to thank you also, Mayor, and the rest of the colleagues that have been working on it.
I think this is probably one of those things that we've all been working on for a long period of time, and I appreciate everybody's efforts. And, you know, in looking at this, what seems to be different is that over the last several years, I've never seen the Chamber of Commerce and the Downtown Austin Alliance aligned with Echo and Austin Justice Coalition and Home Without Handcuffs the way that people seem to be aligned now. And I think that clears a lot of the path. The other one is resources. People want us to not have people tenting and camping in the city, and I think we're all united in that. We don't want people tenting. We don't want encampments. Now, the question is always, what do you, what do you do? Ultimately, the answer is to provide people a better, safer place to live, a home. And I really do think that with money coming from the federal government to us, the county, there's a chance for us to do something that actually put the resources to actually do this in a goal of 3,000 people in three years, beginning immediately to address encampments is, I think, where we've all been pointed to. I appreciate the work. Councilmember Kitchen has done on HEAL and her co-sponsors, and I do agree that this all fits together. But it's all of the pieces in this city. It's community first, and it's foundation communities, and it's Caritas and Salvation Army, and everybody doing this, but pulling it together and then resourcing it. But even with that, resources that were mentioned, this won't happen unless the whole community puts their shoulder to this. We need the philanthropic community. We need the foundations in the community. We need the businesses in the community. We do really, if this is the, one of the biggest challenges, the one that most people are talking about, and we want to actually do something about it, I appreciate this path. I want to thank those organizations. I want to thank Lynn Meredith for being one of the people that's stepping in front of us. Our colleagues, Councilmember Tovo.
I'll be brief. I know we're at our time. I too want to appreciate the effort that's gone into it from our city staff, including Diana Gray. You just jumped right into this work, and I really appreciate it. And thank you. Bring tremendous value and expertise to this process, as well as our private partners who have already been named. I think this is exciting, an exciting time in the community. It really builds. I want to just say, you know, we have the action planned to end homelessness that many housing providers in our community worked on at the request of this council, and it's a plan that we approved. And the work coming out of the summit really builds on and extends that plan so that we have an implementation timeline and also some real, some real solid estimates of what it would cost to get to, to end homeless, effectively end homelessness in this community, which is a goal that certainly this council has had now for several years. So I think it is, it is not different work from what we've been doing, but it is now being done with, with some more, a higher level of detail and some real understanding of what the financial requirements are going to be. And, you know, several of us have been saying this for some time, but we really, this is the moment to continue to emphasize to the community. Now we know, now we know what it would cost. We know there's a lot of will in this community to end homelessness, and we need the private sector to come forward and participate. This is going to be, we're only going to be able to end homelessness if we have the county, the city, and our private partners working alongside to get that done. So, thank you.
Councilmember Casar.
I just want to reiterate without taking more folks' time, my commitment to work alongside the dais and the city staff and those at the county and the philanthropic community to get this done. We know what works. We know that it's going to take all of those different solutions and that we have to scale pulling folks off the streets and pulling them to housing. And I really appreciate the way this has been laid out around us, housing hundreds more people this year and then 3,000 people over three years. Our goals in the past have been set too low, and in Housing Committee coming up, we'll be discussing amending our comprehensive housing plan, which set our permanent supportive housing goals too low in the past, but we were always having trouble reaching even those. And, you know, after many years of not producing enough different kinds of housing for folks experiencing homelessness, we now have to catch up. But it's, but what's so powerful about this plan is that it shows that we can actually really get there, that if we all work together in the coming months, we can put together a plan over the next three years that not only undoes the lack of sufficient resources in the past, but really drives down the amount of homelessness in our community by a drastic amount. And so I want to appreciate all of you for your work and time in this and just make very clear my unconditional support for getting this done.
Councilmember Kelly and Councilmember Poole.
Thank you. I just want to say that coming into council and being a new council member and not knowing that there was a plan for this was really challenging on a lot of levels. And now we have a plan to really help our unsheltered neighbors, and it's very encouraging. And one of the things that I know I will focus on is trying to educate people in the community on how great of a plan this is and how it can be replicated in other places. I'm hopeful that Austin, because of the work that Diana Gray has done and the city manager's office and the city staff has done, I'm hopeful that we can replicate this other places as well and that it's bigger than just solving the problem of homelessness in Austin. And it's wonderful that, that we actually have a concrete plan in place and benchmarks where we can help these unsheltered neighbors. So thank you very much for your hard work and everything that was done behind the scenes that we didn't see come into this plan. It was really wonderful to hear about. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember, and many, many people were involved and worked really hard. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Poole.
So I wanted to reiterate the importance of the partnerships. This can't just be the City of Austin funding homelessness. And many of us, in fact, probably almost everybody on this dais here has said as much repeatedly in the past. So I wanted to ask our homelessness officer to kind of keep that in mind when you're talking about the funding and so forth, because every city is funding homelessness. And we don't also say that it is part of a coordinated community effort that includes businesses and nonprofits and the neighborhoods and the county and the school districts. Everybody across the board has to be pulling in the same direction in the harness. Every time, we don't reiterate that. It simply reinforces the concept that it's only the City of Austin doing this work. And we know for a fact, even if we were to invest every last tax dollar every year into this issue, we wouldn't, we, well, we can't do that because we have a lot of other programs and operations and needs in our community. A lot of other services are needed. And so we can't do it financially alone. And I would urge all of us to keep that in mind when we talk about how we're addressing this issue. It has to be part of, just our muscle memory and the rhetoric has to be that we are part of a partnership with everyone. And I think that that was one of the things that gave me some optimism about the summit that was convened in March, and that was that these larger, these other larger sectors in our community were coming to the table and engaging in the conversation in a coordinated, collaborated way and coming up with a plan for moving forward. It's, so, and that may be the part that's different. But I, but Diana, when you were, when you were talking about the plan and what was coming out of the summit, I thought for a minute I sort of was distracted and came back and for a minute there, I thought you were talking about HEAL and the first phase and the second and the third phases of HEAL. And it may be that that is very similar to what the summit plan is, but can you, are there differences between the summit plan, other than the financing model potentially, than the work that my colleague, Councilmember Kitchen led on early in February, where we go to particular campsites, talk to those people who are sleeping there and encourage them and engage them and urge them into housing, find housing for them and resources? Is that pretty much the profile? I'm looking for what may be different in the strategic approach out of the summit and what work we've already been.
Yes. Sure. So absolutely, working through this approach of going straight into the encampments and being really thoughtful about engaging people there is very consistent with HEAL. The piece around committing to offering housing to those individuals is consistent with HEAL and providing as much shelter as is needed is consistent. And so I think there are a couple pieces that just serve to strengthen that approach. One is that there is explicitly resource set aside for permanent supportive housing through this. We've known that that is probably the biggest gap in our community over time. The lens around equity makes that approach more robust. Certainly, we would have done that around HEAL, but this makes that capacity building of the system, I think, just that much more explicit. In addition to direct housing dollars, this does really look at some of the ancillary services that have been mentioned, such as supported housing, such as aggressive landlord outreach and incentives. So, you know, entirely consistent and, but also probably more comprehensive since HEAL in Phase One was intended just as that, our Phase One and an opportunity for us to learn as we moved forward.
Okay. I think the point that I wanted to make was that we have, we are, and we have been working really hard in these arenas for a long time. And I think the part that has been missing is the coordinated and the collaborate, the coordinated collaboration across the various sectors into the neighborhoods and with the business community. And if indeed that is, for me, that's, that's the stark contrast. But I know that NGOs and other nonprofit groups have also been, were working to address homelessness. So I'm still looking for what's different. And I think what it is, is that it's a new commitment or a re-energized commitment and a recognition that the problem is larger than what it has been in the past. And then that means that we all have to shoulder the heavier burden. And so if we can talk about it in terms of a coordinated effort and not only talk about the City of Austin, then I think we will be further down that road because, in fact, we can't do alone. We have to have our neighborhoods helping us, the residents of Austin, no matter where they are in the spectrum with as far as their jobs and so forth. Need to, we need to join with them. Maybe that's really the shift in the rhetoric is we are joining with our community to help people who don't have homes and who have issues that regaining community and a family can help them with. Because a lot of times homelessness is the breakdown of a family structure, and you just don't have anywhere to go. And so you can end up on the streets. Does that make sense?
It does. And I absolutely agree. You know, we have a community of service providers who have been doing incredible work for many years. What this does is come together and agree that we're really going to have to come to scale for us to have the impact on this problem that we want to and that we all look at each other across the table and say, this is what it's going to take. And everyone, not just the City of Austin, but other jurisdictions and the private sector are committed to making that happen.
Thanks.
Thank you, colleagues. We're six minutes past two. I'll give the people who haven't had a chance to speak yet the opportunity if they, if they want to. Councilmember Alter.
Thank you. I absolutely agree with the hope and the desire to scale our efforts and to be more coordinated in how we, how we do things and hope that we, as a community, can come together and have all these different parts of our community be part of the solution. I do have a lot of questions about the details and would like a meeting. But for now, let me start by asking you, of the committed and anticipated funds, how much are city funds and how much are non-city funds? And how much are nonprofit and how much are philanthropic?
Well, so the presumption is that the funds will flow into the nonprofits, right? Rather than from them. As I look at capital, for example, you know, which is, I believe, 125 million, I see about.
That's getting about the money that's already been committed?
Yes. That's my understanding. Is that right, councilmembers?
So, I mean, none of this works if other partners don't show up at the table and support this. We have been putting dollar after dollar in, and it's not enough for the city to do it on our own. And for this process to be pushing us forward at the speed and to accelerate us, we need others at the table. And I think it's really important for us at the outset, you know, right now, it's great to say there's $220 million total committed and anticipated. But, you know, we spend $70 million a year, you know, as a council on homelessness, and I could add that up. And we've got that coverage from the city. And so those details matter. My hope is that there were commitments made and that we have things in the pipeline. But I don't see that from this, and I want more details on that because we had a plan with Echo. We, you know, we, we, we we relaxed, we repealed the camping ban. And so now we're trying, we have a proposal that sort of combines what we did in Echo and addresses the fact that the camping ban was changed and follows HEAL. And so I just, I want this to work and I want this to be new. But I need evidence that there's others at the table who are serious about it, and that requires the money. Ready. So I'd like to know if you have an answer to that.
So I don't have in top of mind the percentage, councilmember. But let me tell you about several of the sources we anticipate leveraging. Housing Authority of the City of Austin has made now a substantial commitment to several of our capital projects. And those operating dollars are incredibly valuable. And they make up a very substantial part of what it costs to do a project like this. So they have already committed funds and they have signaled a willingness to work with us going forward. Additional funds that we would leverage would include the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program through the state of Texas, which provides equity into deals. We also anticipate increasing the amount of National Housing Trust Fund dollars coming through the state. That funding is expected to double starting, I believe, next year. So I'm happy and look forward to getting you the numbers around the percentage that is committed from other sources, but also driving toward what percentage of the total will be committed from other sources. Because I think that is perhaps even more important. The city is in early and substantially committed. And so we are then calling to our partners to bring substantial resources to the table.
Thank you. And, you know, that is the direction that I, you know, support. You know, all of the examples you gave were public dollars. And there's certainly a really big role for the public entities. But we do need the private sector to step up and help us, you know, solve this problem. You know, and my colleagues have said it alone, that we can't do it alone. But we can't come up, we need to be honest from the beginning if these commitments are, you know, city commitments, et cetera. And, you know, I just want to be clear, you know, the money from the American Recovery plan is not all going to homelessness. We have a lot of other needs in our community that we need to address. And, you know, it's not clear that, you know, we need to understand how the county can fit in here. And I hope that they will be part of the solution. But we need a lot of clarity on that, that money. And if we're going to go to the public and say that we have to have a plan, we need to be clear about this is the part that the city can fund and this is the part we need people to step up. Because the plan doesn't work if it's just the city. And I know that the spirit of the summit and everyone who came was to be part of that solution. But before we celebrate it too much, we need to make sure that those other pieces are together because we have a crisis and we need to address it. And the quicker we can get those resources in place, the quicker we can address it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak to this? All right, Diana, thank you. And then please get us the details. I think people want to see the backup to the numbers that are in there so we can see the detail.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And real fast before we go, because.
10 seconds. I just want to emphasize that as we've been working with Diana Gray, that this is also a path for neighborhood participation. I know that the neighbors in District Five are very interested in how they can help. They have been for a long time, what they can do to help their unhoused neighbors connected to housing and services. So if you could speak to that for just two seconds, Diana, that would be great.
Absolutely. I think that, you know, one of the goals of the plan is really to identify ways that all of our partners can plug in. And so, you know, I, you know, some of the work that happened during Winter Storm Uri, I think, just underscored for me how much Austinites care about their neighbors who are experiencing homelessness. So while we will absolutely be talking to our philanthropic community, foundations and potentially individual, substantial individual donors, there is a place here, both for contribution on the part of average citizens, but looking toward how there's personal engagement with entities doing this work and/or at the very granular, excuse me, granular level of, you know, assembling move-in kits and the like. Because we do want to harness that community spirit.
All right. Thank you very much, Diana, for the work. And get us more detail. And I hope the public's watching this and the businesses and the philanthropists and all the other partners. Because as Councilmember Alter was saying, as we've all said, it's going to take all of us together. And this is kind of gut check time to decide just how important this is as a community. Manager, let's go then to the.